Okay, I'll make a motion that we go into executive session for advice of counsel.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay.
I make a motion first before we get started to come out of the executive session.
And then I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
This is the November 20th, 2019 meeting of the zoning board of appeals for the town of Newcastle.
First order of business is an extension request from Sunshine Children's Home.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Janet Kears, I'm a partner with Delgado, D'Nellin, Weingarten, Wise, Riddiger here this evening on behalf of the applicant. As you might remember, you granted special permit approval in connection with the construction of the proposed addition at Sunshine Children's Home. As you may remember, there were some, there were many conditions of approval, one of which had to do with testing of area, monitoring of area wells. That had to be done for a period of six months prior to the issuance of any permits for construction. Following your approval back in May of 2018, that process commenced. It took a little bit longer to get the necessary participants to that program, but that was finally finished. The building permit was obtained in February and construction is ongoing. We anticipate that it's going to take another 18 months or so to complete construction. This is all consistent with the time period for construction that was discussed with the board when we were before you. It is a complicated and complex project and we're continuing to work on it. So we're seeking an extension this evening for an additional 18 months.
And that's from November 16th?
Yes.
Anyone on the board have any issues, questions?
No, no problem. Okay, I'll make a motion that we grant the extension request for 18 months for Sunshine Children's Home.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Happy Thanksgiving.
Mount Kisco Country Club.
Good evening, Victor Solaric, VKS Architects, representing the Mount Kisco Country Club. The proposal for the temporary dome over two tennis courts. We are here today to request a recommendation to be sent to the planning board for further review. We have received the memorandum from the town planner regarding the status of the application and we feel that we have provided the information that was requested from us, specifically additional views and leaf-off photographs of the proposed dome site, which if you, if the board wants I can put it on. Should I take it yourself or?
I don't know.
It comes to you. So, the drawing A9 is a new sheet that shows the most critical, some of the most critical views of the proposed dome, which you can see in the red line is the, basically the topography and the location of the dome with the pictures on the right-hand side, number five and number eight are what was submitted actually earlier, those are with the leaves on. What you see on the left, or more in the middle of the sheet, views 44 and 45 are the leaf-off condition. Because of the nature of the vegetation there, it's still pretty much covered even with the leaves being off and...
I'm sorry, could I just, just my own benefit?
Sure, yep.
Has the, I'm sorry, the top is obviously leaf-on, right?
So, if you don't mind, I'll just go over there and point to it.
Okay.
So, this view is the same as view eight. This is with the leaves on. This was taken in the middle of summer. This was taken a couple of weeks ago, just before we submitted, which was, I think, beginning of November, I think November 4th. And so this is the dome that, the contour of the dome sitting on a high elevation. This is the existing golf pro building, which is highlighted in both views. So, basically, this one and that one are the same views. This one and that one are the same views. And they were taken, so this is the same as five, this is view number five. You can really not discern much of the dome through the leaves, through the trees.
I'm sorry, the conclusion you want us to reach is that...
You won't see anything.
You won't see anything? So that wouldn't have been my first guess.
So the dome is behind that vegetation?
Correct, correct. In order to, for you to even understand where the dome is, that's why I rendered in the red bubble, because that's the outline of the dome.
At night, how will the dome appear at night? Is it going to be lit from inside? Is it gonna be...
There's interior lighting. It's, the material is non-translucent. It's a solid material. And we have submitted these materials before. We were suggesting green, there were other options, gray and white. This is the translucent slip, strip, so that's gonna be high overhead only in the middle section.
No matter what color it is, it's not, no light's gonna be...
Nothing, no light penetrates to the outside.
Okay.
What about the light strip that you, that's gonna be in there? I thought there was gonna be a light strip.
Yes, it's at the very top of the dome.
So are you gonna get a glow from that?
No, because the lights shine down from the ceiling.
No reflected glow through that light strip?
No, absolutely not. I mean, you can, you can hardly tell...
What you're saying basically is, at night, it will not be visible?
None whatsoever.
Not at all visible?
No.
And as far as the color goes, what color have, it appears as though, to me, the gray looks like the one that's gonna be less visible.
That was the discussion that we had last time, that the board was leaning towards the gray. After seeing these pictures and looking through the vegetation, and granted, this, these pictures are reduced, right, in size, I mean, if you see, if you stand there in broad daylight and look through the trees, I still think that the green is gonna be less visible than the lighter color. But that's just an opinion of one person.
This is going to the ARB, right?
And the planning board, correct.
Right. I'm sure the ARB is gonna have a, an opinion about the...
You could ask them to weigh in on my opinion, you know, with the direction to provide, direction on color, certainly.
Well, it looks like with leaf-off, there's still a lot of evergreen there.
Yes, exactly right.
So, 'cause I was one of the ones that was concerned about the color, and I wanted to go to gray, thinking that there would be bare trees.
Right.
But if there's a lot of evergreen in front of it, then maybe, and I'm only saying maybe, let the ARB look at it too, maybe the green wouldn't be so terrible because it would blend in with the, with the evergreens.
I wanna point out one other thing. The latest submission included a mitigation plan, which includes two major components. One is soundproofing of the equipment. The equipment is gonna be fenced in for safety and maintenance. What we're proposing is providing a sound-absorbing blankets that are installed on the fence, and you have it in your submission, in your packet, that will further reduce the noise, or any noise that comes out from that equipment. Second feature that we're proposing in the mitigation plan is additional landscaping. You can see the darker circles, which are the proposed trees. So, all these light circles is, are trees that are there. They've been surveyed and they are there, okay? But when there are little gaps and openings in between, we're proposing to provide new vegetation, new trees, that will mature over time and they will further screen the dome from view.
What is the difference in the decibel, decibel emission before and after the sound barriers that you're installing?
So, the blankets are reducing the noise by 75%. So if the, if the emitting noise coming from the equipment is 84 decibel, the sound on the other side of the blanket would be 75% less, okay? In addition, as required by the town code, we calculated the decibel level at the property line, which is about 600 feet from the equipment, and without the blankets, they were calculated to be at about 38 decibel level, which is quiet, library kind of environment, if you look at comparisons.
Important thing, the barrier is gonna reduce it.
Could we just go back to the, the view shed, I guess?
Sure.
Again. The one particular neighbor, I don't remember their name, that spoke...
Yes.
I think in each instance that, that you...
That's correct, yep.
...made your presentation. Is this representative of the view from their home, or how did you select this view?
Well, we went around the whole property...
Right.
...and took about 45 angles, angle view. The town planner identified some that were most critical. Number five and eight was one of them, were one of them. Actually, I think she identified nine and eight. The eight and five are pretty much next to each other and they are in direct line between the neighbor and the dome. So, and that's actually on the, I think on page A2. Let me see if I can find it. There's a key plan on page A2, which identifies all the views, their number, and five, eight and nine are along the western border of the Mount Kisco Country Club's property. This is the neighbor that was here, and views number six and seven were taken by them from their living room, which we then used to render in the dome, to show how much of a view shed they would have. So, by standing at view number five, looking straight up, is actually what we have attempted to replicate, you know, what their, their impact would be.
And how many fairways are there between that neighbor and the proposed structure?
Two.
Two. Okay. Sir, anyone this evening who wishes to speak to this application? No? Anything from the board?
One, one other thing.
Sure.
One of the things that we talked about last time was the possible relocation of that equipment to, to help keep the sound away from that one neighbor that was very much opposed to it. Has that been forgotten, or is any discussion...
It has not been forgotten.
And is there any possibility of that helping anybody doing that?
I'll tell you what, what we did, and then we can discuss the benefits. The discussion was to locate the equipment on the south side of the dome, which would be, let me just open the, the drawing, it's easier to... So this is a detailed drawing, partial site plan, which shows the proposed dome and the three pads, two of which would have equipment, and the middle is just a storage stand for the summer, when the tent comes down and gets rolled up and, and stored there. The discussion was whether it could be on this side of the dome. What we didn't know at the time, there's a Con Ed gas line that goes from the clubhouse all the way around to 117. We only discovered that when we actually did the soil testing for the stormwater system. And because we had the, the club personnel with us, we were able to determine where the gas line is. So, it would be rather difficult to relocate that line. In addition, the grade slopes up and creates a situation where the access around the dome would be further inhibited by, by putting the equipment over here. I think that keeping the equipment on the west side of the dome with the vegetation and the distance between that side and, and anybody else or a property line really substantially negates any further need to, you know, move or, or otherwise disguise the equipment. I think it's very well hidden there.
So maybe with the insulating blankets, the sound-diddling blankets, that may not be so objectionable. But the question then comes to, what is the lifespan of those blankets? How will they be efficiently deadening sound from the beginning to the end of their life, or did it deteriorate as time goes by?
Somehow I knew you would ask that question.
Give you a lesson to thank.
I think that this is also in your packet, and I just need to find it.
You're looking for the spec sheet?
Yes.
Is it this one?
I believe that's where it is, yeah. Thank you.
Okay.
So, I believe the, the lifespan was 15 years, and they're basically guaranteed for that life. I think that 15 years is...
So presumably...
Yes.
...to expand upon what Tony would, would wanna see, would be as part of whatever final motion is made, that at the conclusion of its useful life, or before, if necessary, these acoustical panels, blankets be replaced?
Will be replaced.
As part of...
Maintained.
If there's a way to test it.
Why don't we require every 10 years that they're tested and replaced if necessary?
That's fine with me.
Yeah, that's all right. Thank you.
All right.
So, we're making a motion to refer this to the planning board and the ARB?
Correct. And to keep the, and keep the public hearing open until we get the recommendations back in the event there are any further comments or analysis and comments from the applicant or the public that need with respect to those items.
It's a two-hour vote, isn't it?
No.
So we're not closing the public hearing?
No.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we refer this matter, the matter of Mount Kisco Country Club, Realty Corp., to the planning board and the architectural review board, and we will keep the public hearing open until we receive comment back from those two boards.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
State of Marion Kitson Trust?
The board has closed the public hearing, received additional comment with respect to certain, written comment with respect to certain items. The board now has before it to discuss the different issues that have been read, the different applications that have been raised. You're not required to hear any further comment from the public or the applicant unless you, you know, unless you choose to. So, the first issue the board would need to address is the question of the application of the, of the merger, of the merger provision in the, in the zoning code.
I see you're standing. Is that an indication that you, you wanted to say something this evening?
No, it's an indication that I'm prepared to respond if the board is looking for a response.
Okay, fine, very good. Who on the board has comments they'd like to start with, as it relates? I guess you'd want us to start with the merger provision?
That's the first, that was the first...
And deal with that one issue?
Yeah, deal with the, I think the best, I believe the best way to proceed is deal with each of the different applications one at a time, and then the board can provide, well, we can do a straw poll of the board with respect to each of those issues as you go through them.
I'm gonna read my comments in total, and you can separate them as you, as you so choose, or as anybody so chooses, if it's okay with you and the chairman.
Sure, however you want.
Okay. First, I wanna be sure everybody knows that this is my opinion, may or not, may or may not be the same as any other board member. I've reviewed the materials and this is what I feel about it. So we're talking about the merger of lots 14 fronting on Alden Road and Wintup Road, now known as Five Alden, and Lot 15 fronting on Winthrop. The original zoning was half acre, was changed to one acre in October 1949, and the Kitses acquired the lot 14 and 15 in 1978. Just as a review, the zoning code provision 60-420A4C states, "The ownership of such lot was not the same as other lots contiguous thereto at any time on or after the adoption of a zoning ordinance or amendment, making such lot non-conforming an area. If the lot was not in separate ownership, such other lot, or so much thereof as may be necessary, shall be combined with the first named lot to make one or more conforming lots, whereupon a permit may be issued, but only for such combined lots." In my opinion, the "or so much thereof as may be necessary" phrase pertains to a situation where one of the lots is large enough to remain compliant after transferring enough acreage to the other in order to make both lots compliant. In this particular case, both 14 and, Lot 14 and Lot 15 are non-compliant, and therefore must be merged into one lot. So as not to increase the non-compliance of Lot 14, the merger will then, will then create one compliant lot. The "whereupon a permit may be issued" phrase, in my opinion, refers to the issuance of permits for the approved, improvement of code-compliant lots. In this particular case, the lots must be merged and a permit could be issued for renovations and/or additions to the existing house on Five Alden Road, or permits could be issued to demolish the existing house and construct a new house on the combined lots. We must also take into consideration the situation pertaining to back-to-back lots and L-shaped lots. With regard to back-to-back lots, Lot 14 and 15, in my opinion, are not back-to-back lots, as they don't have frontage on separate, parallel streets. With regard to L-shaped lots, Lot 14 and 15, in my opinion, are not L-shaped lots, as they have a common border of equal length. Therefore, combining lots will create a rectangular corner lot with two front yards, not an L-shaped lot. These combined lots will now be one lot that conforms to the current zoning code. There may be some people who feel, as I do, that the merger law in some situations could be unfair. This does not mean that the law is ambiguous or that it should be selectively enforced. Instead, a legislative remedy could be sought, so as to retain the original intent of the law while making it as fair as possible for all concerned. In this particular case, it is without question, in my opinion, that Lot 14 and 15 are merged, but there is a question of fairness to the Kitson estate. Had the Kitson known when they purchased the property that a simple change in the way their lots were titled would have allowed them and/or their heirs to manage the property as they saw fit, I am sure they would have done it. Unfortunately, that was not the case. There's also the question of whether the merger is in the best interest of the neighborhood. Lot 15 is the last undeveloped lot in the original subdivision, and if developed, would complete the subdivision as originally planned. It has been shown that a new home could be built on Lot 15 that would be in compliance with all current zoning requirements. In my opinion, developing Lot 15 with a compliance structure would be in keeping with the neighborhood and would not create any detriment to the environment or the neighborhood. That being said, it is my belief that this board does not have the authority to resubdivide merged properties, and in any event, current town code may not allow for the creation of two undersized lots from one zoning compliant lot. Therefore, I will reluctantly vote to uphold the building inspector's decision that Lot 14 and 15 are merged. If the rest of the board also votes to uphold the building inspector's decision, we are then asked to consider a variance for the merger law and/or referral to the planning board for a resubdivision of property. I don't think these actions should be taken up without advice of counsel and should be postponed to our next meeting. Thank you.
No, I basically agree with Tony's analysis and would further state that the ambiguity, ambiguity, if any, is created by trying to make the words in the statute say what they don't say. If you read the statute and take each word literally for what it says, it is not ambiguous. It tells you exactly what to do when a situation arises as we have today. And as Tony said, sometimes the zoning code is unfair in its treatment of certain parcels. Many times, the, the code gives a relief in the form of the ability to get variances from the ZBA. In this case, there is no provision in the code that would allow for the ZBA to take that kind of an action, unfortunately. So, as Tony said, the relief here is more in the form of legislative action. The town board has the authority to change the statute, and that's one avenue that can be taken by the applicant.
I read the material and I concur with my colleagues. I believe the lots have been merged. I don't find the statute to be ambiguous. And I might add that the Kitson's bought the property in 78. I don't think they even had the opportunity to subdivide at that point, since I believe the lots were merged prior to that point. So, what they bought was a 1.5 acre lot that had already merged. So, based upon what's been said and my feeling that the statute is not ambiguous, I would uphold the building department's determination.
My own opinion is that the...
My own opinion is that the merger provision is not ambiguous, that lots fourteen and fifteen have merged by operation of law. That Lot fifteen may not be developed as an undersized lot pursuant to the provisions of the statute because it has been merged with Lot fourteen, which has already been developed and cannot support a second residence. The matter of the L-shaped or back-to-back lots is a common law issue. This board does not have the authority to grant an area variance from the requirement in Section one thirteen dash thirty. Therefore, the board cannot grant an area variance to allow a subdivision.
Mr. Chairman, with respect to that one issue that you've raised, with respect to the subdivision code, Section one thirteen, one thirteen dash thirty B one. The issue is, in Chapter one thirteen, which governs subdivision of land, in that provision which relates to lots, it states that lot areas and dimensions shall comply with at least the minimum standards of the zoning ordinance for the district in which they are located. That language comes directly from Chapter one thirteen, not the zoning code. With respect to the application at hand, it requests an area variance to allow two substandard lots in conjunction with a subdivision that would be granted by the planning board. That issue has really not been addressed by the applicant or by any of the neighboring property owners who have appeared. My recommendation, with your permission, if you feel it's necessary, would be to allow additional briefing with respect to that issue on whether or not that provision, whether or not an area variance from that provision of the subdivision regulations is permitted, which has not been raised. So, I don't know how the board wants to proceed with respect to that issue. It's really up to you. If you do, you would have to vote to allow further written comment. You don't have to reopen the public hearing, but to allow further written comment on that issue. If you choose not to, if you don't think it's necessary, you know, we can render a decision based on that provision as the board has initially stated. So, that was the one issue I was going to raise with the board tonight.
We should probably take a straw vote.
Sure.
On the merger issue.
Okay, we can do that first and then reach out.
We'll need time for to draft the resolution. And during that time, in the next two weeks, if they want to submit written material regarding that last issue.
Right.
That would be appropriate.
Right, that issue and only that issue would be.
That sounds.
So, if we have the authority to grant them that relief?
If they have the authority to grant an area variance due to the existence of the provision in the subdivision regulations, which state that a lot, lot areas shall comply with the minimum standards of the zoning ordinance. The understanding is that, or the concern is that granting a area, it's not the town's, it's not within the town's purview through a subdivision process to grant area variances allowing undersized lots. This is now, you know, based up, and again, you'll have to decide, but assuming the merger provision applied, it's a one-point-five acre lot. You cannot create two one-acre lots, which is the minimum zoning size in this zoning district. Thus, it would be prohibited under Section, under Chapter one thirteen dash thirty B one. So, if you want to do a straw poll, just with respect to the issue of the merger provision, I know you've all given your opinions, but then direct us to draft a resolution with respect to that issue. We can move forward then?
On the merger provision?
On the merger provision, I will reluctantly vote that if properties have been merged and we should uphold the building inspector's decision.
I agree.
Same here.
I agree as well.
And then the second issue, the second application, is whether an area variance can be granted from the merger provision. Area variances are defined in the code as variances with respect to dimensional or physical regulations. The merger provision is a statutory provision. Again, you know, the board has to make a decision whether an area variance can be granted from that. Your interpretation is the merger provision applied. The request of the applicant is to grant an area variance from the merger provision. I don't, you know, if you have, if the board has, it's somewhat of a legal issue, but that's the issue before the board is whether, it's your interpretation of the code of whether an area variance is applicable to the merger provision.
Yeah, it's not clear to me that the language provides us with that authority. But since we were waiting for the draft of the resolution, we can decide after looking at any submissions that the parties want to send in the next two weeks.
So, do you want additional briefing on that issue as well? Because that's separate and apart from the question of whether or not you can grant an area variance from the lot size. It's a separate issue.
I thought you were talking about the lot size.
No, no, no. This is a separate issue of whether you can grant an area variance from the merger provision.
From the merger, no.
Right, okay.
I don't think so.
I agree.
Yeah, I agree, but I don't think so.
And then the third issue is whether the legal principles of L-shaped lots or L-shaped or back-to-back lots apply. And that's the final issue?
I don't feel they do.
I don't feel they do.
I don't think they do either. And as you said, it's a common law issue. And on our advice from our counsel, none of the examples that were brought up fit exactly the case that we have here. And we are not in a position of making new law, so.
And then the final issue is whether you want to accept the additional briefing. You're going to withhold opinion on that final issue to allow and allow additional briefing? So, you just need to set a schedule for all parties to submit at that point?
I agree, we should give both parties two weeks to respond to that request.
Written submission only?
Yes, written submission.
But let's define the issue.
Right. Whether, so the issue is whether or not an area variance can be granted to allow two substandard or nonconforming lots. And in this case, you have a one-point-five acre merged lot, or that would be the principle, whether or not this board can grant area variances to allow two substandard lots, given the language in the subdivision code, which states that lot areas and dimensions shall comply with at least the minimum standards of the zoning ordinance for the district in which they are located. That's what the issue is.
Okay.
So, you need a motion to allow written comment for that particular purpose?
I'll make that motion that we permit both sides to prepare written submission within two weeks on the area variance matter described by counsel. I'll second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And that's any member of the public and the date would be by close of business December fourth?
Okay.
It's a Friday.
Anyway, the applicant or any member of the public who wishes to submit needs to submit by that date.
It's a Wednesday?
It's a Wednesday.
It's a Wednesday?
It's a Wednesday.
Do you want to, I mean, if that's whatever.
Is that going to be enough time for the council?
Counsel, is there enough time for you guys? Two weeks?
Yeah.
Okay.
Perhaps the Friday of that week, given the fact that those two weeks include the Thanksgiving holiday?
Let's do it the Friday.
What's the date of the next meeting in December?
Eighteenth.
That's, the sixth is fine.
Yep.
Settle alert on this matter?
That's it?
That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next to Marion?
Hello, I'm Anthony D'Amico from D'Amico Electric, here to represent Dean of Marion. Trying to get a generator approved that it does not meet the setback rules.
Right.
I have some pictures here on the board and the computer. I'm not sure which is the best to do it.
We could look on, okay, your board, sure.
So, this is.
Before you, can you grab that mic and just carry it?
Sure. Absolutely.
Your audience is going to miss your words.
Okay. So, this is the proposed generator location in front of the chimney, eighteen inches from the chimney, and the tank location, you know, in this vegetation here. If you notice where the chimney is, and now if you look from the road across the street, that's, you can barely see the chimney. So, there's a fence and landscaping that you cannot see the generator or the tank location.
So, the eighteen inches, that's the minimum?
Compared to a dwelling, yes.
Yes, okay.
That's a minimum.
So, you've chosen the minimum distance from the dwelling? Okay.
The tanks will be buried?
The tank would be above ground as of right now, but buried in this vegetation behind the fence.
So, the tank, does it need a variance? Is the tank even further closest?
The town does not recognize the tank. The tanks are governed by NFPA fifty-eight and they can be placed within setback ranges.
Believe the tanks can be ten foot from a property line, if I'm not mistaken, right? So, this is a view from across the street. No neighbor, pedestrian, or motorist.
What about the neighbor who's closest to the chimney and tank location?
This is.
Is that only across the street? There's no one?
No, there's nobody on this side or that side or across.
What is there? What?
Her property. So, the portion where the generator is, the property line is here.
Okay.
So, this is, you know, like three hundred something feet.
Right.
And this is even longer.
Right.
This here, you've got, you know, you've got.
I'm sorry, is that Red Mark? Is that what, is that the generator? That's a tank?
That's a tank.
And the generator?
Which you guys have in your packet there. But then you have Millwood Road and then their house is another hundred yards from the road this way. So, nobody's within three hundred yards of the generator. Let's see, I have clearer pictures here. If I could technically challenge over here. Yeah. So, I don't know if this makes it better. This is the chimney where the generator would go. And that's the generator location. And then the tanks would be here.
If you were standing on Millwood Road, you'd be looking right at that chimney.
That chimney you can't barely see.
Not, I don't mean if you can see it or not, but you'd be looking straight to where that chimney is.
That's what's dead on or straight in front of you, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right. So, it's not about neighbors, if there were any, to either side, either flank. It's this one neighbor you're pointing out who's across the street who's looking dead on.
Across Millwood Road, you know.
Right, who's looking dead on at the chimney and the generator.
I don't think there's a house dead on, I think it's offset.
No, it's far. Like, I'm standing in the intersection of that crossroad.
Right.
Taking this picture, you could barely see the chimney. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, no, no, I don't think there's any debate about that. We were just trying to understand where the closest neighbor is. And is it, you know, across from the driveway, across from the chimney, across from another side of the house?
Oh, I guess this is what you're trying to show me, sorry. Thank you.
There's the two houses.
Nobody's there.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to this application? No?
Was there any previous construction on the property subsequent to the date of the survey? Nineteen eighty-one?
I believe the survey was done when they did some sort of addition renovation.
I don't remember giving a variance for an addition on this property many years ago. And I don't think it was done. I don't think it was done, it wasn't done right away.
Yeah, I don't.
I don't remember.
I don't really recall, I wasn't involved.
It's quite a while ago.
At that point?
Yeah, it was a long time ago.
And does Con Ed have a line in the street?
I don't believe they have natural gas there. This is propane, but I don't believe they do.
There's no gas being used in the house at all?
No.
There's no meter attached?
There's no natural gas on any property, that's for sure.
On Route, that's Route one thirty?
One thirty-three.
One thirty-three.
No gas. I know that.
Okay.
Which sometimes is even more complicated. But definitely don't feel as though there's an effect to any neighbors, pedestrians. And I've researched, the property unfortunately has a porch here, you know, patio here. And the house, really the front door faces the side yard line, so it's a little funky.
Good. Over here?
I'm good.
I move that we close the public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion.
I'll take it. I move that we grant the variance to the applicant, Dean of Marion, for a front yard variance of twenty-eight feet for the installation of a generator. And a gas tank will also be installed, but no variance is necessary for the gas tank.
That is correct.
The granting of the variance will not create an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties. This is the most likely spot for it and there's no other feasible method other than variance to achieve the benefit to be sought. The variance is not substantial in that there are no properties surrounding this house that would see the generator. And granting the variance will have no adverse effect or impact on the physical environmental conditions in the neighborhood. This is a self-created hardship, but unfortunately a necessary installation in light of past history and the loss of power in the area. So, for those reasons, I move that we grant the variance. Six months, six months to start, one year to complete.
Okay.
I'll second.
And a?
Final survey?
Final survey.
I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, have your variance.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Jen, you?
Six months to start?
Yes.
We, six months to start?
No, no, no. Start tomorrow.
You start tomorrow?
No, you can't start tomorrow, you've got to get your permit.
You have to get your permit, assuming you've got.
You have to start, you have to start within six months.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, start within six months. Okay, I'll be starting. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay.
Happy Thanksgiving.
I have no voice, so luckily I wrote a letter on this one, which I'm going to refer to. It was here in July for this project. As you can read in my letter, we got a variance to add on to the back. So, we needed a side yard. It's a legal nonconforming, it's point-six-four and one acre zoning, and it's very narrow, so.
So, you're not coming closer in the front yard to Hamilton, right?
Correct, we're going on the left side.
Right.
So.
To Eric's house.
But luckily, so, we're here and he's way up here. So, the project started because the mudroom, which was going to be left as part of the renovation. The whole, oh, I'm sorry, the whole foundation was deteriorated. So, it had to be rebuilt. And any rebuilding needed variance. So, the homeowner decided, since we had to come back to rebuild the mudroom, we might as well go a little bit further. As you can see, there's a one-car garage and then there's a storage area on the left. By going out thirteen feet from that one-car garage, we can hit a garage bay. As I'm sure you're aware, Hamilton is a very steep road, it's a very steep driveway. Parking is limited, so by adding another garage bay, it's a very helpful thing. And then there is a screen porch, which was also deteriorating. So, we're proposing to rebuild a screen porch and the mudroom. It is a fairly substantial variance at fifteen feet, where thirty-five is reg. It is a fairly substantial variance at fifteen feet, where thirty-five is required, but as you can see, the way the property lays out, it's extremely narrow, and also the fact that the, the house next door is quite far away and up on the hill.
Tom's letter says twenty feet. The application says fifteen for the side yard variance. Is that right, Tom?
What's his proposed fifteen feet?
Oh, so it ultimately became fifteen.
So it's a twenty-foot.
It's twenty and fifteen equals thirty-five, so, so we're going to fifteen feet, but the variance is for twenty.
Okay.
Twenty-foot variance, right.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to this application? No. I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion at the application of Brian and Christine.
It's actually Jang.
Jang you?
Jang.
Jang, that's it?
Jang.
Okay, well I'll correct you on math, and you can correct your Jang you, how's that going?
No, I do have to do that.
I didn't want, I didn't want to do this, do a no vote, but I do have a little one for you today. Sorry about that.
It's okay.
Anyway, Jang. Uh, I'll make a motion that the application of the Jangs for a, uh, twenty-foot side yard variance, uh, it's required to be thirty-five feet, and a proposed existing fifteen feet for the addition of a garage, and, um...
Right, construction.
Reconstruction of the mudroom, and the porch too.
And the screen porch above it.
Porch above, right. We approve for the following reason, um, this, the granting of this variance will not create an undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood, um, it is the only ways to achieve the benefit sought by other than granting this variance. It is somewhat, in this instance, a substantial variance, but due to the fact that it's legally existing, non-conforming, and the, uh, the tightness of the properties in that area, that should not be determinative. There will be no adverse effect to the physical environment or conditions in the neighborhood. And you can provide us with, uh, foundation surveys prior to certain framing or construction, whether it's supposed to be masonry or whatever, we'll need the foundation surveys first. Final survey when you're completed, and you can start within six months and finish within a year, uh, we will grant.
I second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, have your variance.
Thank you.
Sorry about that, oh, you got it, okay. Grossman and LeVar.
Hi, Ben Truitt, Sherwood and Truitt, I'm the contractor representing Robert Grossman and Joan LeVar. What we're asking for is a side yard variance for both the north and south sides, and the combined, uh, side yard. It is for the construction of a retaining wall, in replacement of existing wooden tie, retaining walls that are failing.
The stone is going only where there are railroad ties today?
So there are some line changes to the footprint of the wall.
Okay.
But broadly speaking, yes, it is in replacement of an existing wall.
In some of those cases, um, does the stone wall encroach further into the side yard?
Uh, yes, it does. One of the reasons for that, among several, um, there is an existing septic system above the retaining wall.
Right.
That, we knew we needed to keep drainage clearances for health code and so on. There are also some construction limitations to that, we obviously cannot impact the septic system, we're forced to work in a very narrow channel between the septic above us and the wetland below us. Having a vertical wall slightly set back out allows us to build this without exorbitant costs.
So, is it fair to say, Tom, is it fair to say that, um, where the wall comes closer to the side yard, it was only to accommodate the septic, uh, conditions that...
The wall has been located based on the septic, he's at the minimums he can be so the septic system can function.
Okay.
So is there a wall there now, that you're, that you're replacing, or you, so is it new?
Uh, there are three separate tiered retaining walls that, that step back into the hillside. We're taking, for argument's sake, the lowest retaining wall.
Right.
And building it up vertically.
Up vertically?
Yes.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to this application? No.
And I, I think I might have missed it, I was fooling around these papers, but the reason you're building this wall up, what is the benefit that you're seeking to achieve by building a wall up?
Uh, well, rather than building three separate walls that step up the hillside, we're building one wall that, that...
And you're gonna fill in behind it?
And fill in behind it, yes. That allows us to have our clearance to the septic system.
Right.
And allows us the physical space to operate for the construction of a wall of this size.
I'm sorry if I made you repeat that, but I just wanted to get it clear.
By all means.
Okay.
What's the status of the, uh, of the wetlands? Are you before the, for, for a wetlands permit right now, or...
Uh, yes, yes, we are. And would there's been no objection from wetlands? If I...
Not to date.
Not to date, yes.
I don't know if the board wants to make, um, any approval of the variance, subject to, uh, obtaining, you know, obtaining the approval of, with respect to wetlands. I move that we close public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion. I move that the Grossman-LeVar application for two side yards and a combined side yard variance, uh, the variance is being twelve feet, eight feet, and thirty feet, uh, for the construction of a retaining wall, a single retaining wall, where today there is a tiered railroad tie retaining wall. Be approved for the following reasons, um, the applicant, um, has had to accommodate septic, septic fields, uh, replacement of the, of the wall, um, this will be subject to, um, wetlands approval, um, there will be no undesirable change produced in the character of the neighborhood, the benefit cannot be sought through other means or methods, the variances, um, those substantial are understandable, given the circumstances, uh, the variance will not have an adverse impact on the physical environment, um, and the alleged difficulty, uh, is not self-created. You'll have six months to start, one year to complete, um, and you want a final, final survey?
And the wet, and the wetland should be a condition of approval also?
This is all contingent upon wetlands approval, um, of the, uh, application.
I'll second that.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, have your variance.
Thank you.
Summit Development LLC.
Evening, gentlemen, my name is David Ball, I'm, uh, prin- principal of the Monroe Partnership. We were the architects with this project, and I'm representing Summit Development. I, I do have a more substantial, this is what was submitted, but I can give you copies that, that helps you actually see what we're doing. Well, it's, it is the same. With me this evening is Chris Sackett from Starbucks, and he could be helpful if there's any sort of operational questions, and then Maria and Carmine Rotundo, who are local representatives of the signage company. So what we are requesting is a variance for the menu boards, that's, um, and just as a background, I was actually, well, I'm, I'm the architect of the, the original project, and so, this, at this point, it's about...
When you say "the" project?
I'm sorry, this is Chappaqua Crossing.
Meaning the entire.
The retail center, yes, so the Whole Foods.
Yep, my sympathies.
Yes, that was, it's been, I'm, I was almost over, and it's been four years, and here I am, so...
Only four years? It's like it was yesterday.
Yeah, exactly.
Right.
But with that said, um, the, the signage standards, I actually personally wrote, and that was taking the downtown signage standards, and then sort of developing that to meet the needs of this development, and that was a process where we were involved with the zoning board, the town board, and the Board of Architecture Review, so it was a, you know, fairly extensive process, and, you know, the result of that is the signage standards that dictate what can be done on the site, the, um...
Steve, I don't remember you guys being in front of the zoning board.
Uh, planning board, I beg your pardon.
Okay.
Yeah.
Let's get that straight, because I don't, I don't wanna be, be part and party to this yet.
Okay, sorry, I apologize.
Okay, no problem.
But with that said, the, the section, um, it's B three, and, and it's, you know, drive-through menu boards, and it basically allows, the language is, one freestanding menu board is permitted per tenant with drive-through operations and shall not exceed six square feet in the area. What's, and, and so what's happened is, part of this process is, the, this signage package did go before the Board of Architecture Review, and it was approved, and then Bill Maskeel, who is the building official specific to this project, noticed that there was some non-compliance issues. The site plan, please. So, the, um, there was some issues with the wall signage on the building, the signage company has corrected them, so there was minor issues about the size of the logo and a few accidents, so the only thing left is the, the menu boards. So, as positioning, and I'm, I'm assuming you're familiar with the site, but if you're not, um, the Sawmill is here to the west, Roaring Brook Road is here, and then Bedford Road, one seventeen, is here, this is facing northwest, south, and east, and this is a small building in the corner where the Whole Foods is over here. And what, um, just one point, is that this building, and certainly the menu boards, are not visible from any of the surrounding roadways or neighbors. So what we have is, really, what's being proposed, instead of one sign at six square feet, there is what's called a pre-menu board, and the square footage of that is six point...
Six... I'm sorry, uh, uh...
Yep.
Is that a static board? Is it, is it, um...
Poster.
It's a static board, it has, it has a poster that they change out for promotions, yeah.
Okay, yep.
It's not a, it's not a LED screen.
Okay.
And the, the smaller area is the actual visual display, and if, if you don't mind raising that up so these gentlemen can see it, so that would be this area, and then there's a dark-colored frame, so the square footage of the display area is six point seven-two square feet, not too far from the six square feet that we had contemplated, and then with the frame, it's eleven point nine-seven square feet. And then as you pass further in, so when you're about to order your, your drink or whatever, there is a, what they call a five-panel menu board, even though for us laypeople, it sure looks like three panels, but basically it's two panels, one panel, and two panels.
You say so.
There you go. And so, in that, you know, total square footage of the, excuse me, so it's, it's twenty-point-one-six square feet of signage area, and thirty-six-point-two-four square feet of, including the frames. And so, in total, we have twenty-six-point-eight-eight square feet of display area, and the total, including the frames, is forty-eight-point-two-one square feet of, um, signage, effectively. So the, you know, it's, that ends up being forty-two square feet and change in excess of what is allowed per the signage regulations. And, you know, the basic concern is that you've got people looking at the signs, ordering, and if traffic gets backed up, it certainly creates operational issues, but it also could be a safety issue as well, so that's sort of the...
I'm sorry, are you saying we should be concerned about it as a safety issue, because the signs, if they were smaller, would be less, uh...
Less visible, harder to read, it would slow down the operations, and as a result, it's quite possible, since people are ordering right here, cars will be backing up into the parking area.
So you're saying the size, you've determined, is what's necessary for there to be this orderly flow of traffic?
What made you pick that location for the signs, rather than further in, closer to the building?
Uh... I'm sorry, if you're gonna speak, sir, could I ask that you speak into the microphone and identify yourself, please?
Hi, Chris Sackett, with Starbucks Coffee Company, and with Story Development. Uh, we would not make the clearances here between the sidewalk and the size of the menu board, so that was, we had to pick the first island that came up with our design, so, and it also gave us a decent stack to include, uh, you know, to make the drinks in early time.
This isn't very important, but i- is this kind of normal in terms of the way Starbucks...
Yes.
Does drive-ins?
I've, uh, I've probably opened personally forty-five Starbucks stores in the past two years with the exact same menu board layouts.
Okay.
And there's, there's always a menu board, it's not, nothing handed out, or...
It's always a visible menu board, yes, next to the order post.
So I just wanna understand this, you're in, you're entitled to six square feet, and they're looking for forty-eight?
Forty-nine, yes.
Forty-nine. Okay.
I mean, for what it's worth, and it, but I think most of the signage standards were developed by tried and true approach to signage in, you know, in the downtown area. There is no drive-throughs downtown, so this was, um, you know, coming up with our best understanding what would work, and I can't say that that, um, is a good excuse or a reason, but at the same time, that, it, it appears that this is really the way somebody that does this for a living prefers to do it.
Was, was Starbucks contemplating at this location?
At the time that we were going through the approval process and the development of the standards, there was no, no tenant for this particular building.
And are there any other, um, boards that are, um, of this similar, of a similar nature that are on the, uh, in the complex?
No, this, this is the only drive-through in the complex, and the closest thing to it would be that Chase Bank has a drive-through that's a remote drive-through.
Right.
But that, and that, in terms of substance, is similar in size than of this.
So, in conceiving of the signage, um, uh, parameters that, that, I, I think you had said you helped devise, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
With, certainly with guidance.
It's not a criticism, but y- you never actually anticipated the necessity of something like this, and, and so...
I think that's fair.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Is there anyone in the, in the audience to speak to this? No.
I, I have a little...
Yes, go ahead, yeah.
This, this one thing that concerns me about this is that we have a project that's not yet even finished, and this, this is the second application for sign variances. Is that an indication that there's something basically wrong with the way the sign parameters were, were, were put forth in the, in the original approvals, and should we go back to whoever did that, planning or whatever, and make some changes? Because I, I'm, I'm not too happy thinking about now it's Starbucks, and tomorrow it's somebody else, and the next day it's somebody else, and if we're gonna give variances for every sign that gets put up in the project, there's something wrong here. We need to, we need to fix that.
All right.
And I don't wanna set a precedent by, by approving this one, and then the next one comes, and says, well, you did two already, what's wrong with three? So, something is inherently not right in my mind, and we have to get that situated.
I would actually respond to that, that the, I think the building signage is well-developed, meaning the, the standards, and I, if I was in your place, I would be reluctant to accept modifications to...
Well, the variance we gave was for a building sign.
No, I, actually, I, I read it, and I was...
We're running away, we had a problem already.
I was actually thinking that I, you know, I don't know if I would come to the same conclusion. conclusion. And so I would actually say that the building signage is well-developed and I, I think, you know, this is not, I'm here to present this project, but if there's others asking for variances, I would be not, I'd be reluctant, or I would look closer at that.
But this is the only-
But this is, this one, I would say, is, you know, we've worked with the signage company on this particular building to make sure that the signage was adjusted to meet the variances, or to meet the standards. And in fact, it looks great and it, you know, it was all of moving, you're reducing a circle from three foot six to three feet and it's still very visible and good. So that, I would stand behind the standards we've developed for the buildings. I just think that this particular signage is not something we contemplated as well as we should have.
I know, I'm sure you're confident in what you did in that way, but I'm still concerned about setting a precedent and starting to slide down a slippery slope of every new tenant coming in with a different reason why their sign should not meet the standard.
Tony, this is the only-
As to be visible or-
This is the only drive-through-
You need the pre-menu freestanding signage?
Well, for now, it's the only drive-through.
That's, yes. Chris?
We would like it.
Are there any other drive-throughs permitted in the complex?
No.
What keeps them from being located there?
That would, the site plan approval is very specific about what, I mean, the approval is this thick of paper and it's very clear that what is built is what was approved.
Okay, so then why do you need the pre-menu freestanding sign?
The pre-menu board is used for seasonal drinks. It's an advertisement board, basically.
So that could go by the wayside, I mean, you don't need that.
Yeah, it's preferred, but yes, I mean, it could be, yeah.
So that, okay. So how many feet would that take away?
Six point-
That would take away eleven, eleven point twelve feet?
Well, that's what the room-
Yes, yeah, the full size.
Down to thirty-six.
Is there any lighting in these signs at all?
Yes, the menu, the menu boards are backlit, so you won't see lighting. It's opaque metal on the rear and the front, the menu boards are lightly lit, so you can see, so you can read them.
How late do they stay lit?
Until closing.
Till closing?
Which is-
I think 9:00 PM.
I don't know what your hours are, but-
Yeah, I believe it'll be 9:00 PM, yeah. Yeah, they're very, they're very dimly lit. I don't have an example of what one looks lit, but it pretty much looked like that when you're sitting in front of it at night.
And the purpose is to give patrons the ability to see what's on the menu?
Exactly. So less, less questions, more ordering. So if they're sitting there asking questions about drinks, it'll increase the order time, which is the concern.
Without the pre, the pre-menu for, are you going to miss that if we don't approve?
If that, if that's a compromise we have to make, we're willing to make, because it's basically advertisements, so.
What are Starbucks' intentions with respect to the store located in downtown Chappaqua?
As in, yeah, I think, I believe we just signed a lease renewal there, so we're going to be there for a while still.
We got a no.
No.
Just making sure.
Yes.
Different markets.
Yeah.
Hopefully.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to try to influence anyone, but I would tell you that everybody is aware that the town is hemorrhaging on its retail. And so in my particular case, I would be more accommodating than less accommodating, but that's just my opinion.
I'm sorry, you'd be more accommodating?
More accommodating, yes. Yep.
Well, losing, losing the pre-menu board is not going to kill the project.
No, but I think there are people that could be lined up to see this pre-menu board and it's a, it's a great attraction.
They do look forward to those seasonal drinks.
It's a seasonal.
Anyway, are there any more questions, board?
No, no.
I move that we close public hearing. You could put your signs down.
Thank you.
They did a great job as an easel.
Thank you. All those in favor of closing public hearing?
Aye.
Anyone anxious to make a?
I'd only drink coffee once a day.
I move that the application of Summit Development LLC as agent for SGP, USPFV, Chappaqua Retail Owner LLC for variance to the, is it the, what is the variance to? Is it to the town signage?
It's the signage code, but it's, it's called the "B Other Signage Subsection 3."
Okay, that sounds imaginative. And that variance is for forty-three square feet. Is it just the one variance? Is it just the total that we're concerned with?
It's the number of signs, I thought, too.
The number of signs being two.
How many signs is it going to be?
So you're only allowed one?
You're allowed one.
And, and so there are two. So we're granting, we're, if this is approved-
Right.
We're granting permission to have two signs where one is allowed.
Correct.
And this additional square feet variance of forty-three feet.
I think we should, where you're allowing this additional sign, it should be limited in size to exactly the way they have it, so that it's not something that can be, you know, rotated or changed.
Right, so the dimensions will be, as they're included and fixed in the application, will not be subject to change or revision without coming back to this board. And you're sure of this forty-three number, right?
Yes, it's more than that, it's forty-eight, if you go for both sides.
But they're allowed six, they're allowed six for one. So if it's forty-eight, the variance would be forty-
Forty-two and change, I'm not sure what it says on here.
I think it was forty-two point two one.
Which is, which is fine.
Yep.
So in my opinion, this will not create an undesirable change in the character of this The applicant is continuing what is the corporate standard as it relates to drive-ins. The variance, I think, is substantial. There will be no adverse impact on the physical environment.
There were no other drive-in, so drive-throughs in the-
Right, there's only one other drive-through in the complex, that being a bank that does not have the same requirements that this retail operation does.
May improve the flavor of the coffee.
The alleged difficulty, I think, comes about as a result of the code being constructed at a point where it wasn't anticipated that this particular retail operation or something similar to it that might have similar requirements would be present. And you would have six months to start, one year to complete. Is there, is there referral here that's-
It's not a special permit, it's not a special permit.
You've already been to the ARB?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, I was at the ARB and they approved, you know, the colors and everything.
Okay.
It's required? The ARB-
For signage, the ARB is required.
Yes.
Okay. And the applicant will observe all requirements as have been placed on them by the ARB.
The only other condition is that the size of the, the additional pre-menu board is as represented.
Yes, I thought I said that, maybe I did.
Yeah, you did earlier, but just a condition of the, it would be a condition, more a condition of approval rather than as a reason for the approval or anything, so.
Okay. For those reasons, I believe we should grant this application.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'm going to say no, because of the two boards. If it was one board, I would have gone along with it, but because there's two, I'm saying no.
Yep.
Then because of the fact that we're missing a member, this would, that would decline the result in it.
Yeah, you need three, you need three affirmative votes, so.
I, yeah, no, I, I want to make sure that each member of the board was aware of that, which was perfectly fine, you know, before, before casting their final vote. No, no, I'm not questioning your-
They knew that going in.
No, I just wanted to be sure that everybody-
Standard procedure for us, we all do.
Yeah, yeah, no, I agree, I agree, I agree.
Should you ask if, if they're willing to amend their proposal?
Right.
To conform to the, to the objections of Elise Howard, who objected-
And Tony, I believe the same.
And you object to the second sign also?
I would, I would vote yes for the one sign being oversized, but two, no.
Correct.
If we're down to one sign, I'll be, I'll be in favor of it.
So you want the pre-menu sign to be six feet, not the six-
No, I want the pre-menu sign taken away.
Taken away.
The real sign. If they're willing to do that, I'm willing to go along with it.
Is it possible that we could get approval for the larger sign and then come back when you have a full quorum for the menu? And I'm not sure if that-
I don't really get too much of the handle.
You won't get, you could, I don't think there's any thing that says you can't try for it again, but it's unlikely that this board, as currently constituted, it's going to entertain you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with making that, I'm sorry, let me go to the mic. Yeah, I'm good with making the compromise of removing the pre-menu board to make the board happy.
Yeah, I'm an agreement, agreement, so we can move forward.
There's a lot of boards in the public.
A lot of what?
A lot of boards.
So with the amended application, you could-
They said they're board, so that's-
With the amended application, you could re, take a new vote with, or make a new motion-
Okay.
As amended and a new vote by the, by the board. But I think that as far as coming back with another board member, that's not going to particularly, that's not going to work.
I think that would be, I understand the nuance of that.
So is it correct?
I want to preclude that from happening.
Well, you already voted on it and it's already, that, that motion has been made, so.
But if we vote on the, the larger sign and omit the freestanding-
The pre-menu.
I want the applicant to come back for freestanding.
As long as the applicant is in agreement with that, then, you know, that they couldn't come back, that they, or that they can't come back in.
And by the way, I respect your decision, I understand.
Okay.
Absent a significant change in circumstance.
Well, of course, if there's a significant change in circumstance or whatever.
So I would make the same motion with the understanding that there will now only be one board and that one three-panel menu-
Five-panel was the question.
That's right. The application, it's not important, it says three-panel, but I could see how anyone on this earth would understand or be confused by that. So, and the limitation would be, am I correct, thirty-seven square feet?
Thirty-one square feet would be the variance. They're allowed six.
They're allowed six, and so they're, they're seeking thirty-seven, which would result in a variance of thirty-one feet.
That's correct. The, the five-panel, the larger sign is thirty-six point two-four, sounds like it was rounded up to thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven, right.
Right.
Okay. Could I have a second?
A second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Aye, again, but one board, one side.
One board, right, yes.
So the variance, so the variance is just for the size now, they no longer require a variance for an extra sign with, without the menu board sign, so.
The one thing I-
That's what, do you understand? The earlier application was for two signs, so they needed a variance for the second sign. That variance was, they amended their application, so that no longer was required.
Correct, yes.
And, and just, it's one-
Do you need any sort of site plan that shows just the one sign versus-
I would like an updated site plan that shows that the menu board, the pre-menu board has been removed.
Okay.
We can accomplish-
Please make that note, Adriana.
And just, there should be clarity that the one sign has effectively three panels to it.
Yes, right.
Is there, is there a, is there a plan that we could reference with respect to that sign, that shows the design of that sign or?
That was, it's part of this, and this is basically-
The pre-menu one, right?
So that's the pre-menu, and that is the-
Put an X through the pre-menu and approve the other one.
Which-
If the board wants to designate to the particular, it's got to be pursuant to this, to the design shown on QID 19-46589?
Go move.
That's the plan, yeah, that is, and as long as that's acceptable to-
Yeah, that's what we need to contend with.
That's the one you look.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
A little bit is to approve?
I move that we adopt the October 28, 2019 meeting minutes.
One second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, we're off.